I'd like for meeting all the three.
By allegiance.
The United States of America. Fans, one nation, for the God.
First item on the agenda is a presentation by Mr. William Donahue on a proposed wall at the Marina Military Park. Mr. Donahue, and if you could speak at the podium because it has a microphone and that way you'll come through on the recording.
Okay, got you. Here we go. All right. Thank you very much. Thank you very much for, to the board for permitting me to speak. My name is William Donahue and what I'm proposing is next summer, and I'll give this out when I'm done. Next summer is the eightieth anniversary to the end of World War Two, two thousand twenty-five. So down in the Marina, not by the half-and-in section, but over by that patch of grass in front of the restrooms there. Proposing to put up a wall, a veteran's wall. I'm gonna pay for the wall. I'll pay for the wall. But a veteran's wall, fifteen feet long, five feet high. And we're gonna commemorate the anniversary, the eightieth anniversary to the end of World War Two. And I've already spoken to a World War Two veteran, Dominic Ladato, who lives in his quad. He's willing to come and speak and. I, I'm a big veteran supporter, so I'm gonna film this event. But I'm gonna have him read the Theodore Roosevelt, The Man in the Arena, which I've already spoken to about it. He's totally on board. We also have other veterans there, Korean, Vietnam. I'm gonna film it. I'll pay for the wall. It's gonna be, obviously, this is up to the board. You guys call the shots. I'm thinking August fifteenth, which is tradit-, uh, September second is traditionally VJ Day, but August fif-, September second's Tumbleweed Tuesday. So August fifteenth is a much better day. It's a Friday, and that's the day after the Japanese accepted the Potsdam Declaration. I'll pay for the wall and the caterer. If a veteran wants to get his name on the wall, he has to give me, or his family has to give me, his VA card number or his DD two fourteen. That's, has to give me that. There's no, that's the only way they're getting it. The engraver charges a hundred and seventy-five dollars per name, so the family can pay that, I think. The opposite side of the wall, and I'll give you the handout here, will be left blank for future veterans. But the, the fifteen feet will be granite and it'll be three separate plaques, World War Two, Korea, Vietnam. So we'll keep it, you know, we'll start with X amount of veterans. I will film it with the board's permission. I'll make a short film. I just sent the, the board a short film I did on Vietnam veterans and the effect that Honor Fight has on them. It's a three-minute, forty-two-second film. It's very good, but you guys can watch it, you'll leave here, just to give you a taste of an event that we do. Eightieth anniversary, uh, the veteran Dominic Ladato is, I'm gonna film him, so if he's not there next summer, I can play him reading The Man in the Arena at the event. I'll have Evelyn Candell, she's a female Marine there too. She was on a stamp, a recruiting poster. So she's, she's gonna be there too with her dressable uniform. Fifteen feet long, five feet high, sixteen feet, sixteen inches wide. You guys can, you know, I'll, I'll, in the handout, I'm proposing where to put it, you guys, and ladies will. Actually won it. I'll give you the handout. Any questions in general right now? I've done a lot of research on this, so, but I mean, what?
You helped with the, the fact that it was granite, as I was gonna ask the material that you were proposing to the wall. And to be honest, ever since we put up. Is that not on? Ever since we established the War Memorial Park in Amman in an area, I have been wanting to establish some kind of a situation to display plaques for veterans. And I had all kinds of plans. I approached a few contractors, but we could never get anyone to bid on it because due to the fact that it's a village project or municipal project, it's prevailing wage. So we had a lot of difficulty getting anyone to bid. It's such a small project and everybody was so busy. So that became a difficulty. So in my concept, not that yours is unacceptable or anything, we would much appreciate this. This would be for veterans of all wars, not, not just the three, so.
Correct. The focus would be World War Two, but we'll have other veterans on there besides.
Okay. And in my concept, it was the, either the VFW or the American Legion would verify the DD two fourteen, as you mentioned, or, or something similar.
Or the VA card number, correct, yeah.
Would be something that can be more in perpetuity if it's the VFW rather than a single individual as being the verifying.
Right. I spoke to, to Bill Hughes about this and then he, he and I have spoken about this, you know, the phrase, it's not etched in stone. It is etched in stone. And I also have the website. If the family says, I, I don't know my father, DD two fourteen, I give them the website, but they research it, they.
Right. It's, it's the family's responsibility.
Yeah, they gotta give me that. Without that number, you're not getting the name on the wall, so. I'm battling someone right now. I'm like, you gotta get the number, so. So I'll, I'll, can I just give this handout?
Please do. Yes.
It's just the bullet points, and this is just where I'm, the half-ended one is, um. On the second page. The second page has where I'm proposing it, but you guys, if you, the half-ended one, I'm not against it. The half-ended one, I'm not, that's, that's great, but I'm, um.
When people walk down library, having, they wanna look at the, um, the Marina, the sun setting. That might block their view, so this is just to the left of it. I mean, if you wanna put it on the half-ended one, I'm, I'm fine with that.
It's a work in progress.
Right.
I very much appreciate your bringing this up and, and volunteering to pay for it and all this work and, and the prep. And I, I can say we're happy to work with you. Come up with the, the plan.
I, I just sent you the link to the, the short film I did, but.
I just noticed that as I was coming up.
Watch, watch it on, at your leisure. I know you're busy. Um, any, I know you're very busy. Any other questions or?
Any other, I mean, this is, we'll have to absorb this, discuss it more and, and talk about it more.
Is isolated to just go with residence?
No. Here's the way I'm gonna approach that. Veterans from Long Island. So if the veteran now lives in Florida, but they're on Long Island, yes, I'll, I'll, I'll do that, but, no, it does not have to be Long Island. But I did speak to Frick Memorials and they said, go with less is more. Don't have eighty names on the wall. Have, you know, twenty-four, and then you can add them later. Like, yeah, one of the veterans on my website is Ronan Zeltnerich. I'm not gonna put his name on the wall, but in subsequent years.
This is, we have the, we already have the, at the cemetery now. So you're basically something similar to what the cemetery is.
Similar, similar to that, right. This would be the name of the wall. I'm suggest, service before self. I, Bill Hughes said, how about this, service before self, so. There you go. Any questions?
Okay. I'm sure there'll be more questions later. This is just the beginning.
Just the beginning. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Very much.
Same as Donahue. Okay. Uh, the next item on the agenda is the school art display and apparently Ms. Drake is, uh, having trouble finalizing the application form, but it's still on tap, so, um. Table it for now and take a look at it when it comes through. So moving on to the outdoor seating, local provisions, one twenty-one Main Street, Jennifer Newbauer, the applicant. Is anyone here from that, for that application? May I ask your questions? Okay.
Considering the violations, it suggests to be.
Yeah. I noticed violations and the diagram. Actually, Brad commented and had a letter back to her saying that some of these things she's requesting is not on her property, it's on other private property. And it looks to me like there's only, she's asking for five tables and ten chairs. Looks to me like there's only room for three and six. So I think we can just hold this for when we have someone to come in and answer our questions. Read table. The one twenty-one Main Street.
I'm sorry, I'm.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So we'll table that one as well. Next one, used to Village Property, parking Lashley Bayside, Sunday, June second, noon five PM. And that's before our season starts, a Sunday afternoon. I didn't see any difficulties with that. Anyone else?
Other application, they're gonna, Lashley Beach.
Yes.
Not, not Lashley Beach. Lashley Beach.
Yeah.
It's close enough.
We don't have an Ashley's.
I don't have an issue with that. I think that's one. Okay. I think that'll be fine as well. And then the next item is the Rosie Yards Run, July twentieth. Yeah, it's the same thing we've been doing in the past and I don't.
Nothing's changed.
Nothing's changed. Everything's fine. Chief, you're good with it?
Okay.
The one item I did notice is that on the signage, the Great Lawn sign, your event is the same or the week just before another event on the Great Lawn. So the, the last weekend.
We're not on the Great Lawn, then we're down at the Marina?
No, but the sign, your advertising sign that you asked for.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Not the event itself, the event itself.
If we could.
Michael, you want us to tell you what you applied for?
If you could be flexible with the signage, there's a display sign that's, we're fine.
Yeah.
Okay. Don't, in other words, don't order the big one.
Okay. Good, because I don't think we ordered it. And perfect.
I mean, you pretty much don't need too much advertising with that anyway, because you get the same people over and over and over.
No, to be honest, Ed used to do that, he's with us, so. Uh, I don't even know if we have signs at this point, so I think we'll be okay.
So it may change.
Yeah, well, yeah.
You've gotta learn how to do these things.
Believe me, Steve, I'm chasing a little bit. I did a lot, fortunately and unfortunately, you know, so, stuff.
Okay. I, I don't see any other problems. It's, it's.
We should be good.
Okay, if there are, please reach out.
Yeah, all right.
That it?
That's it.
Only if you come in second place this year.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Next item is a fifth grade bike to the beach, June twentieth. And that's another traditional event. Never had any issues. Chief, you okay with that? Okay. I don't think we have any problems with it. Anybody else? Okay, all good. Uh, next one is the parking on Main Street at Beach Lane and also parking on Sunset at Brook. And it's a matter of lining these things out for our DPW and the.
We're gonna get, get together today, mother nature.
You, you weren't gonna paint today.
We're gonna get out there and mark it out.
Okay.
Sunset at Brook, where is it? On, on Sunset itself?
On, on both of them. Both, both sides. I'd say it's at the inside corner, but it built, put the new building there.
Oh, right.
Where everybody's parking on the corner.
Parking on the corner.
They're parking on the corner.
Okay.
So we're gonna block it out, move the signs over there and then, and then parking will be enforced on that corner.
Great.
Nothing's being changed. Just a matter of striping what's currently in the code.
It's actually, no, we, we're gonna make a small change in the thing. Actually, the changing from the current law, we're gonna, the current law has the, the footage from Brook Road, the sun, on Sunset. I can't remember what the footage is off the top of my head. We're gonna bring that back and that, not gonna be as much, no parking, because everybody's parking in it anyway. We're gonna allow some more parking in there, give them more parking space, but we're gonna take away that corner.
Yeah, there's no parking here at the corner of State. That, that.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Do you want me to draft the resolution?
No, I think.
That'd be great. Great. Thanks, Frank.
Because we were gonna, we were gonna do the footage today, but I didn't feel like standing outside in the rain.
I can, I can mock it up and then when we know what the actual number is, we'll.
Yeah.
Park is leaving us.
Yeah, you wanna.
She's gonna have help.
Yeah, you want a good section. Give you what the footage is gonna be. That's what we want, Matt, because we're, we're gonna stripe it in the street, so then there's no question.
Yep. I'll pull, I'll pull everything together. We'll email it all around, so.
Thanks for doing that, Steve.
Thanks. And then the other item, Ron Hill, that's in your packet, he did a recommendation for the corner of Main and Beach. Moving the stop sign and eliminating some parking spaces. The only question that he raised in his recommendation was. It's real dark. The proposal is the dark stuff. It's hard to see in the photo. Look at his, her diagram, but. Let me get this right. Main Street, southeast corner of Main, just beyond Beach and eliminate one, two, three, and a portion, parking spaces going through the site.
On the north side of Main Street?
Down, down.
Oh, so we're talking about coming out and looking to the east?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. But he said you could retrieve some of those eliminated parking spaces by making the other spaces smaller. So I don't know if we wanna make them smaller and retrieve spaces or just eliminate the spaces. That's a question we have to think about.
Smaller is gonna be hard because I think the, I mean, if you have multiple SUVs parked next to each other, it's tight.
Well, we could, if we could agree that we maintain the same size we have on Main Street, which is nine-foot wide space. I'm not sure whether those major areas.
They're probably not even all set to an average.
They're probably different.
Repainted over the years, some probably ten and a half and so.
Yeah, before we had the Main Street project, we had some spaces that were eight or one was like seven. Or ten or eleven, so it was all. And if we get, if we get consistent on the nine-foot spaces, I think.
If it comes down where we only eliminate two.
Yeah.
It, it would be, you know, if you need the third space to even it out equally amongst.
We'll start at one end.
Yeah. Yeah, wherever it lands, because you wanted to go to eliminate a couple down the coinciding.
Yeah. And then just move the stop line further north.
You can see this.
Exactly. It's an awkward spot.
Okay.
That's true. It's where everybody stops anyway.
Right.
Nobody stops at the stop line. They stop further.
Chief, I, I do stop in the stop.
You're supposed to stop at the stop line, see the portion, yield right away.
What I do, but by the, I mean, it's not until I'm in the. You really do.
Well, eliminate those parking spaces. I don't.
We were just saying that maybe we could move that stop line, the stop, uh, line a little further as like the first portion of it and see if we really need to eliminate any of the parking because we have a lot of parking that we need.
Just do the stop line first.
Just to see if you can see it, if that helps.
I think part of the problem is the orientation of the stop line. It's facing this way, like northwest, where it should curve a little bit so that it's facing more north.
That's, that's what he has in his. It falls away from the. It's.
Do you have your packet?
No.
It's like it almost like an.
Oh, all right. Yeah, exactly.
It's got, it's got what you.
Yeah, it's gotta come over.
That might be a good idea, though, Ken, like. Might have to not, instead of eliminating the parking space, let's just move the stop line up.
Get myself to that spot where the black line is, I'm usually okay.
Yeah.
I could get a good picture.
Does curve this way. So would you stop there? You do have a minus type.
Yeah.
It's curved the other direction where you have, you know, like.
Yeah, when you're facing this way, you know, you, you really have to creep this way, but if it curves up.
The stop changing outline doesn't make sense.
You can see.
Can we not just add some, our parking's limited, just add it to the end? Is this only?
Going eastward?
Eight or nine spots there, you could.
Yeah, the, my concern with eliminating so many spots, well, three or four, is that especially on Farmer's Market days.
Yeah.
The post office employees use those spots to park.
Right.
On Farmer.
I think if we could get a good look by creeping up, I think that's gonna make a big difference.
But we, we'll change the stop line first and then proceed after that.
I agree. Okay, that's a good move.
Okay. Sounds good. Rob, you good with that? Okay. All right. Next item, fiber optic connections. I emailed all the trustees and we're looking into it. Thanks to Colin for working on this at Liz. And it's a work in progress. Optimum is putting together a proposal. The hurdles seem to be the chamber. Lashley would be a new service that we don't currently have. But we would save money at the Marina and at Rogers and then the third, but maybe even at the chamber again, if we go to fiber optic. So once we get all those proposals in line, I'll share them and then we'll talk about moving forward. We even have a proposal for them to look into DPW, uh, fiber optic, which would be great. I don't hold a lot of hope. And the chamber is a hurdle because of all the equipment and the police, and the chamber has their own separate service as well. So it's, it's a, a proposal in progress, so more will be coming on that. Anybody have any questions on that?
No.
Okay.
Was village hall included in that?
Yeah, changing from, like, I don't know if I should say. Light path.
Right.
Okay. Optimum is, is being considered as well. So, virtual service and everything. Yes. Next one, the foil committee. In light of our difficulties and the numerous number of foils that are coming through and stream, like to streamline and make it more efficient and more predictable, the foil process. So at our council's suggestion, and I thought it was a terrific suggestion, that we form a foil committee. I would like it to consist of all the department heads, especially the ones that deal with foils. I'm not sure the court deals with foils. That has to be worked out. I'm not sure they get foil information, but they may. And also our new clerk and our existing deputy clerk, as the time goes on.
He runs this foil.
And a representative, a representative from our label firm, Beth was recommended.
Spoke to Tony about this, right?
Yes, Tony, actually, yes, I spoke to Tony about this, but.
Yeah, I think, oh, yeah, I'm sure.
Okay, and if we can do this, uh, establish, actually, Tuesday is opening up because the sewer project is wrapping up, so Tuesday at ten o'clock is an open meeting spot for me. If that would work for the other people, and I'd like to volunteer trustee for this oil committee of some sort that will be around for a while. No. Will be able to volunteer. But, yeah, let me know if you're available, if you're interested or if you'd like to do that.
It's every Tuesday.
Doesn't have to be. It can be, I don't think, uh, yeah, the sewer meeting, to be honest, was every other Tuesday.
Okay.
So it could be every other Tuesday.
Speaking of that. Tuesday is nothing but.
Okay, so we can change.
Tuesdays and Wednesdays will be a better, she tends to work out of our East End office on Tuesdays, Thursdays, Fridays.
Why don't you get, can you get together with Beth and have her send me, uh, potential meeting times that she would be available on a regular basis for oil, that we establish some kind of a priority or regiment?
Probably, I think, would be a good idea, but I think may wanna consider is having somebody on staff, be a oil officer, really understand it like other agents.
And, yes.
Usually a foil person knows.
And manages just the foils.
All of the foils, at least initially.
Right. Because as of right now, it goes to all the various department heads and it's kind of.
Most of them, at least deals with them separately. Yeah.
PD gets a lot of. Actually, I was surprised when Brad told me he gets one to two hundred a month.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're, we're like. Fifteen years.
Yeah.
But you guys just tell them what files are here.
How could you get a month?
One to two hundred.
Oh, I get like a, yeah, like a.
Oh, because anybody who wants some records.
Records, yeah, they're, they're boiling for COs and stuff like that.
You just turn those over. Depending on what they are.
We let them know within five days that the records are available. We try to produce them as soon as possible.
Wow. How about the police? Don't you get a lot too?
We do. The issue with our records is that a lot, there has to be a lot of redactions, so we're not releasing personal information. And that's where the complexity comes into it.
There are also a lot of exceptions.
You know, maybe we have to kind of know what's going there, so we don't, we're ourselves updating liability, but releasing information will not support it.
It's a much more involved situation with the police because, uh.
I think.
We have to involve Mr. Zuckerman, our labor attorney.
I could involve a number of requests. Steve has asked me about some. Anyway, I'll, I'll talk to Beth.
Okay.
And I'll make a call or email you.
Okay. And then I'll get input from the trustees and I'll bring one of you in there. I don't know who, but. Okay? There's only one exception, personally.
You, I guess, you're, you're not gonna host for that.
Except I know.
What percentage of the files are digital?
Some, there were years ago, some that were put on microsiege.
Think we have a machine to.
But we don't have the.
A vast majority of building records that are often sought, no, not really plans, but surveys, permits, violations. COs, a vast majority are image into our building permit system. So a lot of those foils that we get, yes, I can, bring it's on the computer. But plans and things like that is, comes out of archives. But no, I, I wouldn't say, I would categorize that, or I'm describing as the most foils and most of those files, most of those records being sought are digitized. It's, I, you know, I don't wanna think that this is a. Plans, they have to come and look at them, right? Those have to pull from, plans are usually scanned, it's a large format. All the formats that are scanned into their building permit system are eleven by seventeen or less. There's their, their size.
Some, I mean, I'm wasting time, but some communities won't let you, won't make copies of plans for like copyright reasons.
Yeah, there's copyright laws around that, but, uh. Someone requests to look at our records, they look at the records.
Yeah, they can see that, right.
Look at, getting copies of it sometimes becomes.
Yeah, you like an architect's plan.
Yes. An architect's gotta.
They can have a picture and contact an architect and get a copy of it.
They, they still give.
Right. For a peek. Yeah. I remember a couple of foils years ago, again, it looks like a luminous file, so the person was allowed to go in the room, have the file box and take pictures and whatever they want. That's our, that kind of situation. That's satisfied it. And then we have another foil asking for material back from the nineteen seventies, so that's.
I think that sounds like something, you have, they have a different location for certain files. Sometimes they can get them. Yeah, they can be, sometimes they can email you, sometimes they can't. Depends what you buy.
That's a very real future for us as well. There's only so much story. That's a very real future for us as well, there's only so much storage, eventually. Eventually, we will need to archive things offsite, but we got a couple of years of this backlog.
Okay. Right. Yes. So, we'll work on that. Oh. Laura?
Yes.
Oh, we already talked about your application, but now that you're here to answer questions, we'll talk about it again. So, this is that completion for meeting, it has one twenty-one Main Street, is that right? Okay. And according to your application, your address is five tables and ten chairs, is that correct? And then there is a response that I saw in the file, and. Seems to us that you only have room for three tables and six chairs on your property, with the three feet directly in front of your store.
There's room for four people.
Eight chairs.
Eight chairs on the property, but the other two that I had, I had allocated it, so three were on one side and two were, was on the other side. If we take those ones off of the other side, four can go on one side.
Okay.
It doesn't pick up any more space. I just had moved it around, so there was like a little bit more space between, but.
So, the diagram that we have here with three on one side, three on the other, there's just four on the.
It would be four on one side on the side of the building that is one twenty-one.
Okay, and that won't interfere with any doorways or anything like that, and traffic in the alleyway?
Nope.
Any other trustees have questions? This is. I've, this is now. In Brad's letter that he responded to, or. Page before that. There's three feet of space on the property.
I was told I had to get a separate permit for the other chairs that went on the other side of the. The two on the other side of the building, which would be the next building over, so.
But that's, that's a separate.
That would have to be a whole other entity.
Whole other entity with that property owner applying for it.
Yep.
Right, which, as far as I understand it, that property owner, if they agree to let it be there, it would be between. Two of them and additional insured for the other property owner, but that's all, that's all them, yeah.
This board can't grant seating off parcel, right, you can only talk with the applicant for this case, so.
This case.
That other property, which is.
That's a separate.
It's all tore up right now, if they wanna come back in and include seating for Ms. Newbarra, that's.
So that would.
We would have to field that at that point.
Yeah.
That would have to be their mission. With the other property.
Because we look at, we do the seating, we want it to the whole property, not just.
Right.
Everybody knows she'd have four.
Well, it's subject to board approval, yes, yes, if there's no board objection to that.
No, I mean, it's, it's not a heavily trafficked. Or, it's narrow, but it's not heavily trafficked, it's not like they're going to have people getting stacked up.
Main Street.
Right, and people in the way and things like that, that's, that's, that's a corridor that I think is really well suited for, you know, people to sit. I I've done it before there.
Two tops, right?
Yeah, yeah, the two tops, you know, with chairs facing each other, you know, I I've sat there before.
That's where you get towards, it gets a little narrow there towards, gets towards Main Street.
Yeah, it gets narrow, but again, it's, it's, you know, it's not, it's not a corridor where you're gonna have ten people passing each other at a time, you know, it's. It's sparse.
It's six feet of right away between the two buildings, part of this property, part of the next neighbor property. We need, there needs to be at least three feet of clear path all the time, so that's.
Right.
Just, whatever is approved by the board, just, these tables have to be all the way over on the table.
What's that?
They had done a site visit and we had got over it and looked at it, and he did say to me that the tables that were there, pushed up against the building were absolutely fine, there was more than enough way. In that alleyway to continue with traffic, so.
That's, yeah, right there. And it widens as we get, shoot, it's backwards, but.
Yeah, exactly.
It narrows.
In between the buildings is three feet right away, three feet right away, yeah.
That's closer to Main Street, right?
They just go to the center, they probably just go to the center.
Yeah, then it widens as you get towards the south.
Widen as you go, and action.
Probably the right away gets wider down there, too.
This, this build, the closer you can leave street you go, the right away gets a little bit wider than the six, six feet of the smallest part, you know, as you widen.
Right, right, it's widened, and then, yes.
Do, do the, when you close up at the end of the night, do the tables fit in local provisions, or they just come for, no?
They usually will live outside, just because it's such a small, because we don't have a ton of room.
Right.
It's a true grab and go, so people aren't really crying in there, they're just having like a quick sandwich and then they're on their way, if they're even using the tables.
Any other questions, anybody? No?
No.
Okay, so I think we'll probably have a resolution on the next meeting, which is June sixth. Calling for a vote on this, and I don't see any hurdles to that at this point.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
Thanks.
I wanted to bring up, I wanted to bring up one other item, I don't know if it's okay to do so.
Yes, could you do me a favor though, because I have a feeling, it just occurred to me, you stand at the podium, because like, reporting at the microphone.
Being that I'm in an alleyway, I, do you want me to speak into this?
Please.
Yeah, no problem, so being that I am in an alleyway, I don't have, I'm only allowed two signs, so one of the signs is considered the sticker that is on my window, and then the other side is a, a sign is a. A small circular sign that hangs outside of the window, and those are considered my two signs. Being a new business, it's tough for me to. Get visibility on Main Street without some sort of an additional sign, so I was proposing a sandwich board, but I know that sandwich boards are not currently allowed. And I don't know if there's a process that we could possibly. Take a look at that would maybe be able to find some sort of a meet in the middle to get more visibility on Main Street.
To be on the sandwich board. And we've gone back and forth and never really approved them yet, but it doesn't mean we can't talk about it again. The other option, I'm not sure if Mr. Hammond, if you can help me on this, some of the buildings can have signage. For all the alleyways, if it's within that alleyway on the Main Street portion, is that correct? Directing.
Yeah, I mean.
To the alleyway.
The sign for the business has to be on the property, but, so even though Ms. Newbarra's business is further back on the building, it's still, there's nothing prohibiting. One of her signs to be either a projecting sign out on Main Street or something on the building by Main Street, but even on that corner, it's just, you're limited to two signs. I mean, if you want more than a second sign, you, we have, you know, you propose a third sign, and you can go before the zoning board, and then maybe they'll give you a third sign.
If that sign was in a sandwich board form?
I don't, I don't, I don't.
Different.
I cannot speak for the zoning board, but I don't envision the zoning board permitting a sandwich board sign. Probably say that's really a matter for trustees.
Yeah, I think that lies with us.
Yeah, that's code, that's more of a code chain. I don't enjoy it, it's just kind of like a variance, there is, your existing code, your existing code says no, there's no sandwich signs are allowed.
Okay.
Back to your sandwich board sign.
Yeah.
Question. I did bring it up several years ago, that from what I heard from merchants, that they would, they felt that they would benefit from sandwich boards being allowed, which. I I personally can't speak for everyone else, and it's a different board now, but. Would be interested in establishing parameters very specific to material use, size, placement, annual. Renewals, you know, seasonal permit that we can monitor and know where it's going to be. And what it's made out of, what the size is, if business owners are interested in that, I I think it could be very beneficial, but I don't own a business downtown.
Right.
So, I can't necessarily say, but I would like to support. That concept, if you and other business owners think that it could be helpful, again, establishing parameters. I'm on the other side, so it's okay.
No, it's a discussion. Was liability, skateboarders, kids, bicyclists, pedestrians walking, tripping falls, you know, I mean, you gotta.
Who's gonna trip over a sandwich?
How many kids go down Main Street riding wheelies on their bicycles?
But that's, that's a different problem, that's a code enforcement problem, we can't, we can't, we can't nip it businesses. City. I mean, sandwich boards all over the place. Well, that's not what I'm talking about, no one's suing over tripping over a sandwich board in New York City, they're advertising what they're serving. I don't know.
If I may, with the outdoor seating.
Yes.
Board has asked people to, in these like barriers, these mobile screen partitions, to try to keep people from tripping over chairs and tables. And I don't think it bothers anybody that there's some incidental signage on those screens, as you see Brunetti's and Goldberg's and who else.
Well, I actually like that.
So, may, maybe, maybe putting that into your.
Screen for your outdoor tables.
Outdoor seating, and then that acts as like a third.
I'm, I'm open to whatever, I just need something that faces towards Main Street, that people can read and see. My logo and like a small little snippet of offerings.
Just thinking, because we may be able to do that.
Yeah, hundred percent.
As part of your outdoor seating. Can I, we need the south.
Yep.
It'll be regular. I, listen again, let me just clarify, Jen, Ms. Newbarra, if businesses think that it would be beneficial, I'd like to hear from them. This is, I'm, I'm stating my opinion as a non-business owner, so I could be way off, so.
Oh, there's a couple.
I leave it up to the business community to say what they think will help them, and I'm listening, but if no one's interested, I'm, I'm cool with that, too.
Okay, and I can kind of take a hold, there's a couple of other business owners that I've spoken to about it, because I wasn't aware that sandwich boards weren't allowed. And they had expressed interest as well, because some others were down an alley and had the same issue of getting that visibility on Main Street, so.
Yes.
I can speak to them and see.
To be honest, we can't have it since before.
Yep.
Doesn't mean we can't have it again.
Yep.
Maybe think about.
The screen.
Your application, all the screen, eliminate parcels of, seats, tables that are off subject property, and then this board can discuss it.
In the next meeting?
Yeah.
So, should I resubmit that maybe tomorrow? The amendment too, so they're drawing with a screen on it?
Yeah. And then we can hold off, or we can. Tentatively approve this application as it stands, and then you resubmit an application with your other thoughts about the screening situation. And we can listen to that at the next meeting, approve that at the next meeting, so.
Is that a different application, or is it the same application?
Be amending what you're, I don't want you to be without.
Yeah.
Your month.
Yeah.
Cause our next meeting, actually, there is traditionally no work session in June. That, so we would, that would be the work session in July, which will hold you up even more.
Yeah.
So, what we can do is approve this application, just as we stated.
Yeah.
In our June meeting, June sixth, and then accept another amended application and consider that at the next work session, which may be in June, it depends on.
Okay.
How many items start coming in like this, this might prompt another work session.
Okay.
You have to notice properly, but there isn't one on our schedule traditionally in June. Okay?
Ready.
All right.
Thank you.
So, back down to number eight. Drone grant, we have. Two things to announce that are very good, thanks to, we have, she applied for a grant and the police are all in, and it's for six thousand dollars, as it was. For a drone, and it's primarily for use at the beach, but the police wouldn't have to be involved, because they're the ones that have all the licenses for our current drone that has other uses. So. Been moving forward with that, correct? And the other grant that we, the chief got for us is a technology grant for a hundred and thirty-two thousand, I believe, plus. For items such as cameras and things like that.
You know, the grant was written to upgrade the existing body cams and also tasers through Axon. So, it'd be covering the five-year new contract with Axon, covered in its five years out, so. Pages will be all new, we currently are the X twenty-six, which are at the end of life, and this will be replacement with page seven. And then refreshing all our body cams, so that now every full-time officer has their own body.
So, thank you for that, leave, the board. Anything else on that?
No.
No?
I was happy to see that we got the grant, the shot in the dark, I got an email, I sent the application in, it was, we got the letter saying we were approved, so.
The next item, item nine, furniture for the Marina and Maria's East North Park. We are little be still tables have seen the end of life at Maria's East North Park, so we're thinking of replacing them. I asked Matt for some ideas, and then I came across something in Amazon that I liked, and happened to be on my desk when Maria came in, and she said, ooh, I like that, so. Mr. Franco and I decided to order one of these. To see how stable they are, and it's half aluminum rather than the steel, and rather than powder coated steel.
So, it's lighter, right?
And it's, well, it's, it'll hold up better. Salt air and weather.
It's less.
Definitely weighs less.
It weighs less, yeah, but we ordered one set. Yeah, a hundred and forty-nine dollars, and if it looks good when we get it, and we can order five more and place in the Maria's East North.
That got delivered to the police department today.
It did?
It was outside.
Got delivered today?
Oh.
Well, that's not for you.
But that means you get to put it together.
Do you think we could add more than five? Or is it, do we have a, an area that?
Traditionally, we had three, three, like in the Bachi Court, the new Bachi Court area, that vicinity, three Bachi Court.
Okay.
And then we had three on the other side of the Chamber Building near the fountain.
Right.
And people tend to move them and relocate them anyway, but we may secure them with just a table with a.
Anchor.
Anchor or something. Yeah, so they don't get shuffled all around, but I was thinking now that the Bachi Court is gone, on the northern portion of the park, we might have more of a.
Yeah.
More there and there, in that area.
And we have opportunity for some more that can be sponsored, like we do with our benches.
I don't know where you would put a plaque on those, or how you would attach a plaque, and.
Yeah, and I'm not, I didn't have the detail on it.
They're only, they're a hundred and fifty dollars a set.
Right, that's a big part of the margin.
See, I wasn't thinking.
Yeah, see?
Great, great something.
It's something we can consider if there's interest.
We should look into it, you know, down there, see if we scope out some other spots for it, then, in addition to what we pay at a park's funds, that people might be able to sponsor some more. I know that we consider them seasonal, though, right?
Yes.
We.
Yeah.
Do they have the ability to be anchored? Or put in.
Would anchor just the table, though.
Oh, chairs.
If you try to anchor the chairs that you're tripping.
Yeah. It is that they table, too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But maybe the table carries the plaque. Yeah, that it's there.
If you did a plaque, you're gonna have to anchor the table because otherwise.
The table, put it there, so.
Cause you're not gonna put umbrellas in there. Uh, so yeah, they're, they're set for umbrellas. And they're somewhere, if you can make the, somewhere, make us figure out somewhere in the umbrella.
Every time we have someone ask if we can dedicate a road or an alley or something like that to someone, we always say. Well, we have opportunities to, you know, honor someone or organize someone. The more options that we have. You know, we have benches, but yeah.
We could make the tables reasonable. It could be a hundred and fifty dollars for.
Right, exactly. Or five hundred.
Five, that could be there. I, probably, it, it should be honored in perpetuity and that's.
Yes. Yeah, yeah.
So the tables are not gonna last.
Same thing with the benches.
Yeah.
Yeah. Bikes last a lot. They're, they're pretty heavy duty.
They have a life.
They have a life expectancy too.
Yeah.
But the tables are.
Yeah. Well, that's like the trees too. When we have a little uh, plaque in front of a tree, everything has a, you know, life expectancy. Same thing with benches and things like that.
Everything, I mean.
If we convert over to, you know, uh.
Well, that's probably a better idea. Instead of doing the tables, do the pavers on the way.
Ground mounted.
Off the Main Street.
Or even a paver under.
And they'd be, and they'd stay there all year long.
Yeah, something that has longer life.
Had to redo some of their papers.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Everything. Nothing's forever, I guess. Um, and the other furniture issue is that uh, I made an executive decision and I had the DPW put our Anorak chairs from the Marina. At the canal. So now the Marina is San's chairs. So.
The canal looks very.
Canal looks good.
Canal looks really.
Canal looks good, yeah.
And I like them there. So maybe you order four more Anorak chairs to replace the Marina or.
Yeah, those were nice to have there, yeah.
People did use them.
They did.
Yes.
Including some of the employees, which I said, no. So I think that takes care of that. And then number ten, special event code and fee schedule. Um, I sent copies of the code, Brad drafted and. I went over it, did some more um, changes and read, and I went over it, it's more changes. And the proposed code, special event, fee in combination with that. I would just like to make sure you guys review it and then I'll have Mr. Angel review it. Okay. Okay, I'll, I'll email it.
Great, or you?
Yeah, I'll email the most recent version for your review and then maybe we can start moving forward on that. Any comments? Anyone that has comments? Any questions on that one? No? You all good?
All good.
And I, I drafted this like two years ago, but I think I thought three of Steve had it correct.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it was all put, all.
Yeah, tried to.
Right. That's what we did. Didn't rewrite it. It is, yeah, this version. So the idea left out was the piece that we never.
Yeah, and that's just, that would just, I just marked something up so it starts.
That should be. Uh, referenced in the code, but also.
Adopted by resolution.
Adopted by resolution, yes.
Do the Marina rates and then tell.
Yeah, just do, do by resolution. Don't do the local law anymore. Beach different rates. Yeah. All right. Anything else from anyone else? Anything? Any questions? Any questions, comments?
I'm, I'm so amazed.
Yeah, didn't come out for sure.
If you have something, you know. Mr. Van, you have?
Okay. All right.
Oh, what would, what did I think about the, yeah?
Oh, our, yes, for the special exception, the letter came in, it's up the county, so I'll put that resolution on to the special exception. The five fifty-nine uh, road.
Fifty-five fifty-nine, you know.
Yeah, that, that'll be on the agenda for June sixteenth now that we got the letter from the county. And we already have that resolution. We had it at the last meeting, but it has a letter from the county. So. Anything, anyone else? Okay. We're done. We don't even have to adjourn it to work session. Okay. Thank you, everybody. And it's still raining.